Everybody, it's Roger Roll. Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the July 12 Select Board. We will start the meeting with a call to order, so roll call starting on the end. Select person there.
Daniel Lam.
Peter Walco, Jim Mike.
And Mantrick, one screw, on growth.
George Bailey, Chesley Drive.
Jim Sikosha, 21 James Henry Drive.
And Andrew Net, Nancy Point. Road. He weighs on the drives here. If everyone could join me, make a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Excellent synchronism. Is everyone had a chance to review the agenda? Yes. For a motion to approve the agenda.
I have like one item to add if I could, excuse me.
You're straight up and down.
Thank you very much. I have an updated copy of the COVID screening exclusion and travel policy. It was updated consistent with the state guidance. They rolled back some of the guidance after the expiration of the governor's emergency orders. I updated the policy after these materials were published. And if the select board would be willing to review that, I'd like to add it under old business letter C.
There any objection?
No, no objection, sorry.
No good. All right.
Mr. Chairman. Seems how I wasn't here for the last today. Interject question, please.
May.
I have one item that I would like to discuss. And what would be the procedure for doing it? Should I go through you first or?
Where's the item? In the agenda?
It's not in the agenda.
Oh, oh, you would like to add it to the agenda?
Yeah. So that's what I'm asking for guidance.
Present it to the board and either add it to the agenda or not add it to the agenda.
Right now?
Yep.
What I'm asking for is information pertaining to the software update we have for the cemetery. I'd just like to know the status on it or what we need to do with whatever it is. That's what I have, Mr. Chairman.
Old Business D?
Please, does everyone agree?
Yeah. Yeah, sounds good.
I have a. Thank you.
I'd just like to make a comment on on the consent agenda. I'd like to make comment reference to Mr. Tibido.
Okay.
As opposed to having, I think that doesn't need to be on the consent.
Okay, so move it off the consent agenda agenda and into really should be in appointments.
To the appointments. Yeah, good. Not at first.
All right, so he is or he is now stricken from the consent agenda. Any other items? Hearing none. Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Bear motion.
Seconded. Seconded. Roll call vote.
Here I.
Mantrick, I.
Bailey, I.
Sikosha.
Now I. Right. Public hearing. The acceptance of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 state and local fiscal recovery funds. Barrington is estimated to receive $969,845,000 over two years.
Like make a motion to accept.
Okay.
Discussions? Okay.
I think I make a motion for all the money and interest into the town hall fine. For hooking the town hall.
So we can't do that.
Why?
The funds are subject to the requirements of the federal government. I included some links to the current guidance documents from the Treasury on what the funds can be used for specifically. I also mentioned in my materials that we're waiting for the final guidance. There's still a lot of questions on what we'd be able to spend it for specifically. If the board wanted to identify priority that wasn't specifically listed in the Treasury guidance, the the best way to do that would be if there's revenue shortfalls. The funds can be used to backfill revenue. So if we show a revenue loss year over year, we'd be able to use some of these funds to make that whole. And the select board would essentially be able to identify priorities outside of the guidance to use that money on. Waiting to see the final details on how they want us to calculate that. Based on all the information we have right now, Barrington isn't really well positioned for that because our revenue has continued to increase. We haven't seen a shortfall revenue. Some of that is smart policy decisions the select boards made, which is unfortunate because it's limited our ability to use the funds. That's so bad thing. Yeah, so there's, I think the select board should have a lot of conversations on how the funds are used. This is really early on. We don't have the money yet and we don't have the final guidance yet. The purpose of being on the agenda right now is we have to hold a public hearing in order to accept the funds. And then the select board would still be the agents to expend those funds. So any decision will come before the select board, just like the CARES Act.
When you look at this, this is about 12 and a half percent of our annual budget. So it's a pretty reasonable chunk of funds coming in and one thing that I want to make sure when we do this that we're cognizant of is in appropriating and utilization of funds. Doesn't put us in a position where we see this split for two years and then have a big spike on the other end of it.
Right.
Well, I feel no money is free because this is going to be an impact to people in the future.
Oh.
So with the town hall, we can bring it in level funding, we'll go impact the people on fixed incomes will win. So the shock, we're going to be paying for this in the future. And the kids, younger generation.
Right. Part of that will come back to us working with Connor about how we utilize it. And and if you look in it, there's specific pieces around infrastructure, revenue replacement. Right. Service to disproportionately impacted communities, which I don't really know if Barrington fits the disproportionately impacted community side of it.
Yeah, there's a lot of questions. And I'll be honest, you know, you folks pay me to pay close attention to this, which I have been. There's, there's a lot more questions than there are answers just because the the federal government and they did the same thing with the CARES Act. You know, they released guidance and then they their process is called the interim final rule, where they put out documents on what the rule was going to be and they solicit comments. They make adjustments to those rules before they implement them. And so one of the frustrating things with the CARES Act money is that they turned all this money over, they said, this is how you can use it. People started spending the money and then they moved the goalposts and and they changed the requirements. And so I think we're best suited to wait for the final rule, wait until the final guidance. I hear your point about the town hall and certainly I think there would be opportunities to spend some of the money on the town hall project to reduce the cost of the bond. One of the big things is HVAC. You know, this, these funds could probably be used to install the entire HVAC system in the new town hall with the goal of, you know, the ionization type processing that the schools install. So there are things that we could use the money for, but we need to, we need to wait before we make decisions in that direction, I think.
I think the law specifically prohibits us from using this to reduce our tax. We tax it very specifically.
Absolutely.
Be used for that.
Yeah, and so this is similar to the CARES Act and people around the office get sick of me saying this, but you know, money's fungible. And so, you know, the CARES Act, I think is a perfect example of this. The CARES Act money could not be used to reduce the, directly reduce the taxes. But the CARES Act funds could be used to pay police and fire wages and benefits. So we took a large portion of the CARES Act funds and coded the the funds to the police full-time wages line, creating a budget surplus in the police wages because we had budgeted, budgeted funds for that. And so that surplus in the operating budget gave the select board flexibility in tax rate setting and into the unassigned fund balance to have those funds available for other priorities. And that, you know, that was the, that was one of the things that the federal government changed along the way, saying as a matter of administrative convenience, you could do that. So yeah, we will have options and the select board will be able to make those decisions when the time comes.
So I had a motion to accept it or you have something to add to it?
Something else I just wanted to add to this. The part that I'm going to add is that when you get to infrastructure, infrastructure was used in many cases by the president, what have you say, that used to help with bridges and what have you. And the other part was that on the new news today, he was speaking with the vice president. They were talking about using this to refund some of the towns where they put money away from the police department to use that way there. And I just wanted to put that in because I don't see it on this list. But it just came out today and doing it, I want to say that. But so.
Right, that we didn't, that wasn't, that doesn't impact Barrington.
I understand that. No, no, I understand that. And it goes by what was being said earlier is the fact that they changed the rules or they moved the goalposts, however you want to say it in the beginning. So I would really think that before we did doing any distribution of this money or talk about it, we really had all of the latest rules in front of us so we can use that as a guide. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I could send you things on that. First, on the bridges infrastructure, the the guidance is specific right now that infrastructure projects are limited to water, wastewater and broadband. So the federal government is making money available for infrastructure. They've identified that as a priority, but it's not a part of this program. To your point about the police funding, the, you know, politically at the federal level, the direct municipal aid is being touted as, you know, funding for police departments. It, I would expect that the updated guidance would make that more clear on where it can be used. And I'm guessing they'll say the same thing as they did before with the CARES Act that is an administrative convenience, it can be used for police and buyer EMS wages and benefits. It's not in there right now.
What I was doing is I was trying to, what was said earlier is to add credence, more credence to the fact that when you talk about how we're going to spend the money and how they changed the goalposts and everything else in it, I'm just saying that it's critical that we turn around and really wait to see where it goes and what changes they do with.
Correct. Select person there first and then.
I'd like to amend my motion to accept the grant and all money and interest directed by the select board on distribution.
I just want to second Mr. Sikosha's motion.
Okay, so let's hang on one second here before we roll on the motion because we have a public comment section to this first. So before we move forward with any of the motions, I want to make sure we open it up to public comment.
Great. So if you're participating remotely, you can raise your hand, unmute yourself, enter a chat in the comment, let us know that you'd like to speak. If you're on a telephone, you press star six to unmute yourself. We'll give it a couple of moments. And this is specific to the public hearing on the acceptance of the ARPA federal relief funds. I will just note to the select board, per state statute, the hearing was advertised in Foster's on July 1st. And if anybody'd like to make a motion different than what I drafted in the town administrator report, please just add to that. We need to make sure we have that language in the motion at a, at a minimum. You're welcome to add to it. And I don't see anything coming through electronic.
Nothing coming through and it has been in five seconds, a complete minute. So we will close public comment. And so Dan had made a motion and Jim had made a motion.
I was simply making a motion because, you know, this is just allowing us to be able to accept this when the opportunity comes if we choose to. So I mean, maybe the verbiage in here, we shouldn't be getting too hung up on it. This is just allowing us to say, okay, when it comes back with maybe a more updated list of everything that's included. This is just allowing us to say, we can participate when the time comes. So that's why I would like to keep my motion as it was to accept the acceptance of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 state local fiscal recovery funds as is for owners.
I had my hand up.
Yep.
Having that, so how we had recognized, we had this, I'm starting out, anything, how you had recognized this quote.
Say that again.
How do we, we just beat out a line, do we raise that hand?
No, you raised your hand and I went down the list and called on everyone.
Right, for the motion, that's why too. I raised my hand. And then you spoke just. So then read his hand. How do you want to acknowledge this? If you're to, for the future.
So everyone's putting a hand up, I will work my way up and down the line with it. And as I see somebody has their hand raised, when I look up, I will call them. I might not be the correct order, but if I'm not, somebody can help correct me there. So right now there is a motion to make in it, to a motion to accept and expend the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 state and local fiscal recovery funds estimated in $969,845 from select person Sikosha. And I have a second. Do you want to make a motion that is different and we will vote on this one and then circle back?
Good discussion.
Connect discussion, yeah.
Point of order, I suppose.
Yep.
If Dan chose to make an amendment, the motion for amendment motion could proceed from there.
Yep, that's, so do you have a, do you want to make a motion to amend the motion?
Yes, I would accept, same as you have done. I want patrol, the board have control over this. So I believe there's a, if you can be an impact, maybe we look at it somehow in the future. And like you were saying, two of them, the dips and the highs or I think it's all affect our budget.
Right. You, you also realize that all funds have to are processed through our board anyway. Like we make the allocation on funds, whether it's through budget or through requested expense.
Right, that's how I make it clear as a.
So you want to make an amendment to it to state that
Of procedure.
That, that using all the same verb, verbiage, just as expended, as approved for expense through the select board?
Yeah.
You have, is there an objection?
I'm going to go ahead and second that one.
All right.
That's good, because that's one of the things I was going to put in. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So we have a motion, we have a motion to accept the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 state and local fiscal, fiscal recovery funds estimated in $969,845 with approved expenditure by the select.
We haven't voted on that amendment yet.
Right, that's, at this point, we have, everybody agrees to it. This has made them, I have a motion to it, I have a second to it. So a roll call vote.
Here I.
Mantrick, no.
Bailey, I.
Sikosha.
Now I. Okay.
So it's an amendment, now you can vote on the motion.
Well, there's an amendment to it with the motion.
Well, you voted on the amendment, then you.
Oh, yeah, you just voted on the amendment.
We just voted on the amendment, now we got to.
So.
Jim's.
So then the, so we've amended, we've agreed to, we passed the amendment four to one. And then I guess the original motion of accepting and expending the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 state and local recovery funds estimated in $969,845, roll call vote.
Here I.
Mantrick, I.
Bailey, I.
Sikosha.
Now I. All right.
A lot of work, so moving towards it.
Great. Too many amendments and motions moving around here. Okay, our next item is the consent agenda for approval with meeting minutes, the previously submitted signed documents, including the removal of item E that moves to appointments. Do I have consent?
Hi.
Actually, I.
Bailey, I.
I would like to make a motion to make, accept the consent agenda.
Thank you, I'll second the motion.
Here I.
Bailey, I.
Sikosha.
Now I. Okay, so consent agenda has been approved and voted on. All the other votes. Appointments. First, I feel like I've missed a public comment.
They'll come right after appointments.
After appointments. Oh, there it is right there, okay. So appointments. Paul Tibido for the zoning board of adjustments moves under appointments. Does the board need discussion?
I'm, I'm just like, point, I think he's very well qualified. Good candidate, but I'm taking this opportunity to say that maybe we should make some sort of comment or provision that we start following the zoning board and reduce the variances or in some way, put the variances in check. Please. Because I think some of our, our variances almost negate. We go away so many variances that in some ways the zoning ordinance doesn't apply anymore.
Um, there's some really important points, but you can add George, he's on his own.
I was going to say, select person Bailey may have.
One of the, one of the items that everybody has to bear aware of when it comes to the land use boards, the power that the select board has is to appoint individuals to that board. And when it comes time for changing, it has to be changed by the planning board, who in turn will hold hearings prior to our hearings on the amendments that they propose for the public to do. Then once they're finished with that, then they go on the, for the
Voters.
For the voters, thank you. And that's, that's how it's decided. Anything that we want to change on the zoning or the conservation commission that's been approved by the voters has to go back to the voters to approve. So what you're, what you're saying is that all of the changes that are coming before the CBA, we should vote to turn around and change it. We can't do that unless we have the public that comes in. Yes, there is a whole vote, but I'm here to tell you there are, but they all have positive reasons according to what our zoning ordinance is. And when we had Karen and we had Reyes as the lead officials on the board, they were very precise of what they were doing and with it. I suggest that, you know, we go before the planning board with something, planning board and bring it up that way there. That's a way to have a change.
Yes, that, that wasn't my point. My point was that we have ruled, voters voted on and the zoning board frequently makes variances for the things that we all voted on.
So are you suggesting that we further interview the candidates for clarity and such point?
I, that, that's, that's one possible there. Address that particular subject. I mean, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
But we did vote on this, we did agree. And the zoning board keeps making variances and frankly, they're useful variables. But I think there's, we might want to watch because some of them don't seem particularly useful. It's just going to be rubber stamping what people want violating the approved zoning order.
So in, in reference to this, this is about an individual being appointed to the CBA. So if we're, I, I guess I understand what you're looking for, but if we're looking for in reference to the current position of this, is there something you would like to see with the current candidate or that you would like to consider before appointing the candidate?
No, I think this is very well qualified. It's just that the opportunity to address an issue, I think, broader issue, select board be aware of.
So should it be an item for a later topic or a topic of discussion at a further meeting?
I would, I would second it.
Okay.
I really do. One of the other things I would ask the chair to consider is to authorize the Connor to include the
Planning board?
Planning board also, but also to turn around and have the minutes included in our packet for the CBA so that individuals have a heads up and can review it. That's just another way of doing it. I, I, I see what happened with that. I don't know if the rest of the board members received it or not.
We have this member on the CBA that can ensure that we all get that.
All right. Point taken, point taken.
Select person there.
I'll drag it out some more. If the issue, same issue keeps coming up, meeting after meeting, law says you need to address it. So, so if you try, I'm certain ones that you think are, we run too often, we look at them individual.
Right, so I think we've started a long way from where where this was originated. So, so hold on, select person Sikosha has had his hand here.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Paul Tibido as a full-time member of the CBA with a term expiring in March of 2024.
How second?
I had, I've got like four seconds down here. So roll call vote.
Here I.
Mantrick, I.
Bailey, I.
Sikosha.
Now I. Okay. Yep, so can Connor, will you please put that in for their agenda item at a future meeting?
Be happy to.
Thank you very much.
Public comment.
All right. I keep saying, I'll write a lot. Yes. Yeah, apparently. Public comment. Open it up for public comment.
So again, if you're participating virtually, we'd be happy to give you an opportunity to participate. You can unmute yourself, cover up your microphone. You can also raise your hand if you're participating on the Teams platform. If you're participating on a phone, you can press star six to unmute yourself. Just get our attention and then wait to be recognized by the chair.
We do, I mean, we can't see it, you know, the people online can't see, it's a huge crowd of people here waiting to get up and stand.
It's true, yeah.
Give it another 30 seconds.
Chief Walker regrets that he couldn't join us tonight. He's at a tricentennial steering committee, missed out on a good public comment. I mean, Chief Walker tonight.
This meeting will be half an hour faster because of it.
Eeru. I'm trying to take up slack.
All right. I'll close public comment seeing as we have no one looking to make public comment. Administrator McRivers report.
Yes, thank you. Two items for you tonight. First, our July work anniversary, first meeting in July. I'm glad to share some long-tenured employees this month, starting with our very own recreation director, Jessica Tennis, who grew up in the recreation department as a camper and then a camp counselor and now is the director. So she is celebrating 16 years of employment in town of Barrington. Seth Wentworth in the fire department's 11 years this month. Marsha Gases, our town planner's nine years this month. Peyton Goodell, the deputy tax collector's four years this month. And Eric Pike in the fire department, who's our, was recently promoted to a full-time, one of the full-time positions at the fire department, has been working for the town for a year. So thank you for those employees tenure and look forward to make more years with them. The second item, very exciting community news, I'm sure you're all partially aware. The Barrington Blaze 12 U softball team won the Bay Rouge, New England tournament. And that secured an invitation to the World Series, the Bay Rouge World Series in Florida. And so they're actually planning to leave Sunday. As it relates to the town, they're, they're actively fundraising to help cover the costs. They've had a lot of generous donations so far, but some members of the Barrington Blaze and their families will be at the transfer station on Tuesday and Thursday over on the grassy area collecting donations. So if you see those folks there, that's what they're doing. And if you'd like to donate, you can reach out to any representative. So congratulations to them, wish them well down in Florida.
Good luck.
Absolutely.
Select person Bailey.
Question, as you know, years ago, when the softball also reached its pinnacle, it would have liked for the young, youngsters to do the same thing. We installed road signs at the beginning of some of our major roads coming here. And I would like to, I know it's a little late, but ask for consideration to have a duck these individuals here for the New England team to turn around, at least have a sign posted for them on that same issue.
You want to do it in New England or wait, seeing how they fare at the championships?
Well, I want to get, I, I would like to see how they fare in the championship. Well, I want to get, I, I would like to see how they fare in the championships. Of course, there'd be no yes on that also. I understand where you're going, but I don't want them to miss out on the New England season.
I thought the last one was done because they were, they was not New England championships for the last team. I thought they won that for all the entire.
Yeah, I forget. I mean, I'm sure the fire department could get something up on there, Markey.
I accepted the town. I don't remember.
Yeah. Great. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Municipal office administrator Connor?
I have nothing to add. That wasn't on the concession.
Full business, new town hall update. Connor, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah. So finally, after a couple of years of, obviously bad news, mediocre news, I have some good news. The, it seems that the town hall project is getting back on track. As you know, the designs for the town hall have been finalized for a number of months. We've been waiting for the state permits of the larger subdivision. The, in working with the developer and town staff, we have an opportunity to go before the planning board on July 20th, requesting that the conditions of the subdivision be waived for the town hall lot, the town hall lot alone. This will allow the lot to be created legally and conveyed to the town, deeded to the town. So we could begin construction as soon as August. The developers amenable to it. We have an application submitted for public hearing in the planning board. It's noticed in the paper. Butters were notified. Information's available on the town's website. So we're hopeful that that will get us back on track. Talked with regulators, our transportation, environmental protection, and everybody's on board. Talked to the contractor, Carino Construction. They're wrapping up some projects in July and will be prepared to get started as soon as we have everything in place. Second point about that, first time sharing this information publicly. I know I've sent some notes to the select board through the process. Really glad to share that we have, were in the process with the federal appropriations for the potential for some direct federal funding through what's called community project funding. This is something that the current leadership at the federal government reinstituted, basically earmarked projects or, or like the pork barrel type legislation that adds projects to existing legislation. And so Congressman Pappas's office received a few hundred submissions, selected 10 for his office to submit for direct federal funding. This project was one of them. You can see all the information on Congressman Pappas's website. I have in my report that it's been submitted for up to $500,000 direct federal funding. Actually, a call over the weekend from Congressman Pappas's office saying that the appropriations committee was reviewing it over the weekend and asked if we'd be able to utilize one and a half million dollars. And so the appropriation request has been increased to one and a half million, which to your point, select person air from earlier in the meeting, that would be tremendous for the community. I believe confidently that would eliminate our need to bond any money for this project. And, and could really be a positive thing for the community. So nothing's finalized. It won't be finalized until the federal budget's finalized. But some promising news and, and will hopefully, you know, help the, help heal some of the pain of waiting so long for this project to reduce some of the community impact. So it's been a lot of work. Respond, you know, getting the material submitted and responding for this. But hopefully the, the time and energy will pay off to have some additional funding. So that's good news there.
Yeah, if we could eliminate the need for a bond, that would be spectacular.
So happy to answer any questions, but really just an update for the board and the community.
Thanks Connor. That's a positive update.
Yep.
A paving management plan. Connor sent out some information regarding paving management plan and using our new engineer of record, CMA engineers to develop a new and usable pavement management plan with a base fee of $41,600 with the optional asset integration available with it for an additional $4,500, which would bring the total up to $46,100 to be utilized from the transportation capital fee reserve. Select person there, you have your hand up?
Yeah, I just want, I hope this gets used better than the last one. Now, I didn't predict the road agent, but she's utilizing all the tools, made big improvements and stuff. And we have a lot of life out of the rules of the development of the tools. I'm basically right. So it's a good tool to have, but like we spent $88,000 all the time. I hope this is utilized better. I want to get predictive of the road agent.
Well, well, I think that, sorry. That, that's a big piece of where I want to make sure that we go with this is the last one. I, I remember when I first came on the select board nearly six years ago, asking the question about our road plan and then looking at it and finding out we weren't utilizing the road plan at all. And most of it being because it was, it had a budget that far exceeded what our allotment in road spending was, and we were not able to either keep up or manage attainment of that plan. And I want to make sure that whatever we decide on for a plan is something that is reasonable within our town budget and has an active way for us to maintain our roads and sustain our roads at a cost that aligns with what we allocate to it on an annual basis.
And I couldn't agree more. And I think I have, obviously you were part of the process, as was select person there with selecting CMA engineers. I have a tremendous amount of confidence in, in the project team that they presented. You know, with this, we've obviously talked about this project a lot. We talked about it a few times with them. They put this task order together and, and in my opinion, perfectly captured what we're looking for. And, and under A, the assigned description background, if you look at G, says the annual budget for paving is $700,000 with 775 bill in 2021.
Yeah.
This budget is used for reclaiming any partial reconstruction paving except for funds we use for ancillary road maintenance. And then further in the recommendations, they talk about needing that specific budget.
Right.
I think one thing that I'll, I'll mention to the board and for the community that are watching at home, I think the most important difference that we will see from this entire process is, relates to the graph that's on page four of my town administrator report. So Barrington has done a great job taking care of its roads, not the best and maybe not always the most organized, but we have good roads, 81 miles in town. This graph represents the cost to maintain and preserve well-maintained roads. There's a lot that the town doesn't do on the preventative maintenance and rehabilitation side could do to extend the life. And this graph, you know, I won't get into the weeds, but essentially the, the curve, the orange curve is the condition of the road. Extends over time. And you can see the inflection points on the curve and they're highlighted. You can spend a dollar early on in a road's life to save $5 later. And this is things like cracked ceiling, fog ceiling, doing the, the repairs to keep the roads in good condition. So that's something that's part of this plan. We will see happen differently in Barrington. You'll see crews out there, cracked ceiling. And you'll see work done that hasn't been done before to help save good roads. You'll see roads that were just paved a couple of years ago with crews out there working on them to keep them good. And so that'll be one bigger difference in our budget. So thank you.
Select person Andrew.
Yeah, I just had a question about the optional, the traffic sign part of the of Street Logix. I mean, is that in fact the addition, where addition to the $41,600? It amounts to what, $3,000 or something?
Two things. Yep. So they, their automated system will pick up an inventory of all of our signs, all of our road signs, location, what the signs are and our pavement markings. And so we'll be able to use that with the Street Logix program to do reporting for our road striping contractors, changes that we want to make. You know, we added some additional stop bars last year and for the sign management as well. And so the cost to do that when they're already out there with the, with the equipment scanning is quite a bit less than any other way that we could do it. And, and so, you know, really think that it's worth spending the money now. We'll have it. I don't think we need them to analyze the condition. You know, we can do that. We can keep it up to date. But I think it makes a lot of sense, since, since they're there to collect that data, get all the information that they can. So we can use it to our benefit.
So if I read it correctly, it's $4,500 for the first year on the software and then it drops to $3,000 annually after that.
Right. And so that software is something that we're not positive, we, we will need to maintain to maximize the benefit. We won't need to maintain it to benefit from the data collection. We intend to import the, the data outputs into our asset management program that we're developing with oil and tanna right now. And we've had some joint meetings to make sure, you know, we, we capture everything we need to. The Street Logix program, the license for the first year comes with it. We don't, it's basically just a GIS-based program to view the information. Primary benefit for our use will be we'll be able to update the condition assessments as we do work for roads. We can also do that in the asset management program. So the jury's out on, on if we want to maintain that license, but we'll have a better idea once we start using.
Just see it as a another piece of software to maintain moving forward. Every time you add a piece of software, you either have to make sure you use it, keep it all up to date or
Yep.
make the decision not to. Select person, Bailey, you had your hand up first.
Yes, my, my question is on the signage program. I hope that we continue to use that because each sign does have a light expectancy. And we do have a number two, not very many signs around town that have gone past that because of their reflectability and everything else. I just hope that this program will pick it up. Help, not just myself as an elderly person, but the others here in town also.
It's a great one.
Yeah, thank you.
Select person Sakosha. So where you would come up and you were, you know, take a slide, a very bad Debbie Downer on the software program. What we have to look at though too is, you know, it's, we don't have any more marks like walking through the door every day. So, you know, we're gonna have to lean on technology at some point. So, you know, the, the information doesn't get lost from position to position. And then, you know, some guy might not be as experienced as Mark and be like, well, we should do this road. And, you know, and if we can look up and be like, hey, we just did this three years ago, it's, it's fine. And that's where Connor's talking about would be asset management software. It will all actually go into that.
A different program. So Sep, yeah, whether we need them both at the same time, that's what the jury's out on. We absolutely need to get it all electronically. These are kind of like, there's some overlap to the two programs. So we're, we're basically going to use the first year to decide which one we're going to use for the road management side of it. So, but all the data is being captured.
Well, that doesn't even make sense to me. Because if we already have something that's, that's tracking this stuff, why are we wasting the time and effort to?
We don't. We don't have it yet.
Okay.
So the, the big part of this, the big money that we're spending would be spending on this pavement management plan is twofold. First, automated data collection. So the street scan company drives all of our roads with monitoring equipment that automated collects automated condition assessments of our entire road network. Crunches all that, crunches all that data every time. Then we have our engineer who we say, we want you to take the information that this computer told you. We want you to use your professional engineering license to make recommendations to us on what the priorities are. Take that information and the other information available, make recommendations for us. So kind of twofold. But with the data collection, we, we need to make sure to your point that we preserve that data for the future. This program, Street Scan, has Street Logix, which they give us for the first year. There's not an option to not have it. We could either maintain that or bring all of the data that they collect as part of this process and move it into an asset management program, which we're currently developing with a separate engine.
The, the only reason I caution all of you folks on it is sitting here in this seat. We may understand the value in having an electronic data program like that, but you may have a board three years from now that is not this board sitting here who can look at and go, it's 3,500 bucks. I'm not spending that on it. And they scratch it off. And, and you end up losing the access to that software to get your dead data. So you either have to export all of it and do exactly what we're talking about doing now by putting it in the asset management program before you lose it or you run the risk of losing it, being locked out of it and it gets wiped and pathogen. Yep. Select person Bailey?
On that, the software that we're looking at, will we be able to pull up information prior to making road paving recommendations? We can get that information ahead of time so that not only can Mark, but us will have that so we can use that as a review, put a budget together.
Well, that's, CMA is going to put that proposal together for us and then submit it to the board. That way we have guidance on our road selection process.
Thank you. That's, that's, that's it.
So please. Go ahead.
No, I don't think there was a hand up down there.
So I, I mean, we're, we're voting on this, guys. Like, you know, what are we thinking for a motion here? I mean, what are we, is it, are we looking at this being like, okay, let's do this programming for a year. Let's get the data. Let's move it over to the assets, asset management programming. And then we just have it revisit it at one year, see if we want to renew it.
So really what we're doing is looking to make a motion for, to accept CMA engineers with the authorization to to authorize up to the $46,100 from the transportation capital fee reserve on this project. So we're accepting CMA engineers and then authorizing the expenditure of the funds out of our transportation capital reserve so that they can move forward with the process. They're going to perform the analysis. We'll get the data back and that will help Connor, Mark and the board make the, make an educated decision on how to proceed moving forward. Steph, bring some clarity to it.
Yeah, thanks. Everything else.
Select person Bailey?
Thank you. Mr. Sakosha, maybe the inquiry, but I can tell you, what you said is that it does happen. Way back in 2000 or part of this was put forward, the board had the present one that I was on voted for. And then over the years, as you had said, it was put aside because they thought it wasn't worth while for the new board. Doing this will give us the basics that we need. So we continue through the years to have it. And even, even if somebody says, no, they don't want to spend the money, upgrade it, but at least we still already have it because, I mean, what, what the chairman was saying happened years ago back when we had all the zeros on, at 20, you know, so.
Essentially what it does is stop, it, it helps keep our priorities in line rather than somebody saying, well, I draw this road every day and I don't like it. And, and it kind of directs the road agent out to go allocate funds to a road that may not actually be a priority road for us at that point in time. So sorry, select person there had his hand up.
Yeah, well, he touched on both. I'll utilize the program and I computer illiterate, but I know it needs to be done and I will support it. But one thing this year, I won't have any observation yet. So I'll get a report from the road agent and then maybe the CMA, but I think I'm up for cash, extra money away for us. So when you get caught up and then once this all falls in place, it should move smoothly. That's my personal thought.
Hopefully that'll be part of their plan. They'll address that in there. And if not, we can call that out when it comes back to.
That's, I don't want to address it yet.
Select person Sakosha.
So, so that's what I'm wondering is they're going to come back to us with, with, with another pack, with the final package, final proposal, correct? So why are we voting on allocating the funds right from this fund to, to get a finer price from them? I don't, I don't understand that.
So did, it sounds like it might be some So it sounds like it might be some confusion. So the proposal that we're asking the select board to approve and spend the money on right now is to send CMA and StreetScan out to develop the road, the pavement management plan for us.
Gotcha.
Right now. They're going to come back, if you look at their schedule, they're going to come back in October with preliminary findings that we'll use, Mark and I will use to present to the board, say, this is what we'd like to do for paving next year, based on their findings. In November, they plan to finalize the five-year plan.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to accept CMA engineers task twenty and authorize up to forty-six thousand one hundred dollars from the transportation fee capital reserve.
Discussion. Any more than we have, we'll call vote.
I.
I.
Bailey, I.
Sakoshia.
Naff, I.
Thanks.
The COVID-nineteen screening exclusion and travel policy discussion.
I would like to make a motion to accept
the amended COVID-nineteen screening exclusion and travel policy.
Correct.
Second, we have a second from select person Bailey.
I.
I.
Bailey, I.
Sakoshia.
Naff, I.
Sem sites.
Yes, cemetery software site.
So, might have been six months ago now, I sent this information out to the board, but a good opportunity for a public display. So for those watching at home, I share my screen, this is the town's website. If you go to departments under P for Pine Grove Cemetery, visit the Pine Grove Cemetery site within the town's website, and then the Pine Grove Cemetery website brings you to the data catalog of burials and locations within the cemetery. You can search the records, it'll display on the map for you and show the ownership records, et cetera. So, the information's there. And I mentioned this in the report I sent to the select board, but the I have to, I should pull it up, the names and dates were prioritized for the data entry. There's other information that's available on the burial card beyond names and dates. And so we're still working on that data entry, that's on a rolling basis. But we prioritize getting the names and dates in there, or names, dates, locations, I guess I should say. So the information's there for anybody interested.
Yeah, the reason, I appreciate that, the reason I thought about that is when we really talked about it years ago, of putting this in and having it updated, and one of the things that happened was that we, my wife and I and family, we bought a lot of squads. But then we turned around one day, we went there, we see that somebody else had bought the same squads. So that's why I was asking about the condition. I must say, Rick got that straightened out in a matter of couple hours, it was taking care of everybody's satisfaction. That was the reason I was doing it, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Connor.
You're welcome.
Thank Rick and the rest of the committee on that, please.
We are selling them cheap and stacking them deep?
That's it, that's it.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for the demonstration, Connor. It's great for the public to be able to see the fruits of a couple of years' worth of labor actually paying off. Moving on to new business. Combined town and school deliberative session, sounds like the school board is amenable to it?
It hasn't been before the school board yet, so after both deliberative sessions last year, conversation kind of spurred between town staff and school leadership about, you know, the opportunity to have a combined deliberative session. Everybody really seemed on board. I sent out an email recently to some of those same folks, including the chair of the school board and select board. The chair of the school board, you know, said, I'll bring it to the school board to ask them about it. So I wanted to get it before the select board to see how the whole group felt. We'll have some logistics to work out. I mentioned some of them in my report. But really just looking for direction from the select board, if you think this is a good idea, you're willing to sign on for it. Ultimately, it's your decision when we hold our deliberative session. You only have two options. But it's your decision, so I want to make sure I'm on board before we proceed.
Select person there first.
I think it's going to make a long day. Very long day.
So I was going to make a comment on it, and I can, and my comment is we often see people at town meeting for the town portion of it, and the school board deliberative will go relatively unattended, less than a handful of people that show up for it. Yet, I think there is probably no bigger gripe than we hear about than our taxes, and we are twelve and a half percent of the tax base in town. So my thought, or my feeling on it, is that combining the town and the school deliberative session into the same day may be a long day, but we're only going to be upfront for part of it, and then they'll be upfront for the other part of it is actually a really great idea because it starts bringing some light and awareness and hopefully a little bit more community engagement to the process of the school board as well as the town.
I need clarification. Two separate budgets, is it legal to do that?
Combine them. It is legal to do it. I mean, it's combined in that it's on the same day, but it's two separate sessions, right? So some communities will have a different moderator for the district and the town. And so they would even have separate moderators, you know, moderating the meetings. We have the same moderator. We have different clerks though, right? So the town's clerk would, you know, be responsible for her duties at the town deliberative session, and the school clerk would be responsible for her duties at the school, so on the same day, but not, not governmentally combined.
Select person Sakoshia.
I would love to echo what you had said. I've actually done this in a scale and brought two organizations together. Actually, three. And so that way, everything was kind of like a one house. And it made people more aware of the entire picture, and just not a certain part of a picture, because, you know, a lot of people haven't been educated on how the town and systems work, and, you know, when they need to show up and whatnot. So I'm in agreeance with Bailey on this. Yeah, is it going to be a long day, but look at it efficient-wise for the town, it's going to be one day, everybody's going to be there. You know, we won't have to do another day off for the kids from school. You know, makes sense to me. I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but that's my two cents. Select person, Andrew.
I was just going to say, it makes one long day. Last year and the year before, I had two fairly long days. And so I think this is a good idea, and I think your point is very well made. Both the town citizenry, but here are two parts of the budget, and we're not the biggest part.
Right. Select person Bailey.
Thank you. The only part I'm going to say is it makes people more aware of what their tax dollars are being used for, and then there's no secondhand information like there has been in the past, that just gets everybody in an uproar for nothing because they weren't there to see. And so there might be some disappointments at the voting booth, but at least we're making everybody informed. If we go for the combined, I guess, we'll go with a combined message.
So is it fair to say consensus that the select board agrees that a combined deliberative session is the appropriate way to go?
I believe you have the support of the board.
Oh, yeah.
My next report is, the school board meets tomorrow and I'll bring this up. I don't know who else will attend, Connor, if you're attending, but I'll carry the message. We concur with that.
Wonderful. Yeah, so how I envision, I envision myself and the superintendent will work out some of the logistical details with the moderator and the clerks. Probably coordinating with the chairs of each group and bringing, you know, like the final details back for this group or both groups to make sure, like I said, you know, who's going to go first, how do you advertise the times? First Saturday, second Saturday, and put some recommendations in there, but we'll work through the details, I'll report back.
Have we talked to Bron? I know he was on board last.
He's been part of the conversation.
Have we talked to him recently?
Yes.
Okay.
Been a week or so. Very much supportive. Hey, he's only going to go one.
He'd be excited about it.
Yeah.
Next item, the cost of living adjustment methodology that Connor provided to everyone. Connor, do you want to talk about?
Perfect. So I think after last year, the select board made a terrific recommendation, which was, hey, let's get together outside of budget time and decide on what data and information we're going to use to consider cost of living adjustment. So, you know, we're not trying to parse through data when we're under the gun to make a decision. So, similar to what I presented last year, in this recommendation, I pulled from what was recommended in the compensation study, so essentially, you know, cost of living adjustments are simply to keep wages up with inflation. Every year, the value of the dollar decreases with inflation, and so the wages we provide to employees, if it's not correct, it also decreased. And so we paid for a compensation study in two thousand nineteen. One of the recommendations in that compensation study was to make sure that cost of living adjustments were reviewed annually. Their recommendation was to look at the Consumer Price Index, Social Security Cost of Living Adjustments, and what other New Hampshire communities were using. Last year, I polled ten New Hampshire communities, a lot that were part of the compensation study. And most of them used a similar combination of the Consumer Price Index and what Social Security was offering for a cost of living. So I did some research on when the data is available to develop into the recommendation. So the Bureau of Labor Statistics publishes the Consumer Price Index as a measure of financial inflation. There's really two regions that I think best capture our area. First, there's the Northeast region, which is published bimonthly, or which is published monthly, excuse me. And then bimonthly, they publish the Boston, Cambridge, Newton, Massachusetts, New Hampshire region, which includes Stratford County. If you look at the history of those two, the Consumer Price Index in both of those regions, they're not exactly opposite, but they ebb and flow differently. And so I think normalizing it by averaging, using both of those is to Barrington's benefit. But that's for you folks to decide. Additionally, the Social Security Administration, each year in October, announces what, if any, there will be for a cost of living adjustment to be implemented the next year. So my recommendation, which continues on to the second page, is to essentially take those three data points, average them, and use that value rounded to two decimal places. So specifically, the data would be used from the last time the pay plan was updated through the relevant dates. I have in my recommendation that the select board would review this at the first meeting in November. So there's data points from September for the Boston, Cambridge, Newton CPI, and data from October from the Northeast region, and data from October with the Social Security Administration. If the value's positive, obviously that would be a pay plan increase, increase in values in the pay plan. If the value's negative, which could happen, the wages wouldn't be reduced, but that would be factored in in future years as inflation goes the other direction. And so, you know, for example, if the value was negative a half a percent this year, there would be no change, and then next year, that would be booted into any change in inflation or Consumer Price Index the following year, based on how the recommendations laid out. So visual representation of the formula below. This is what I recommend. I think it's the most appropriate data points. Happy to answer any questions or take other input from the board.
Yeah. Since we're talking about this, we know what the school board is doing with their I'm sure that the part of it is contracted, but there are a lot of people who aren't under their contract with the school board. We know what they're doing with this.
They have, well, there's two components to the school board, because there's a union component.
Local unions.
Yeah.
Yeah, the union though, except by contract, I'm more concerned about the non-union contract.
I can ask, I don't know. I know that the current teacher's contract, it does pretty similar to what the select board did with the recent compensation study, correcting their wages. Don't quote me, but I think it's like four, four or five percent increases each year for the term of the contract. And so I think logic would deduce that a portion of those increases are essentially making up for lack of cola in the past, similar to what happened with the town. And I think that was a big value of the compensation study in doing that in a methodical way, like the select board did, identifying that our wages were low, but our benefits were rich in comparison to our labor market. And so the select board made corrections to both, brought wages in line with labor market and reduced benefits so that we could maintain a competitive nature with securing and retaining employment. So happy to ask the school.
Yeah, again, the union contract is kind of a separate, the teacher union, to me, is kind of a separate issue. The rest of the employee might be of interest.
My general thought is I'd like to table this and digest it some more. There's a lot going on here and a lot to work through.
Yeah, I need to see the numbers more.
Is there any more information you need from me, or you just need more time to review what was presented?
I'll give you a list.
Are you being serious?
No.
Okay. Can you make sure I have a list to me by Wednesday at noon before the meeting? Does anybody else need specific information?
I'd like to see the average on all three of those numbers.
Yep, so as of today?
Sure.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, it goes up and down, it even goes up and down seasonally. So the numbers now won't necessarily reflect what the numbers will be in November. So that just a word of caution, but I'm happy to calculate it from where the numbers are.
Well, it's sad, but also put in, you know, if that's the case, put in the projection.
So how are you factoring? That's what I actually want to go look at, is if the number changes every two months, how are we factoring that piece into the equation?
Well, that's why I've identified specific points in time that we're always using to compare, so that normalizes any seasonal adjustment.
They're always October. I mean, that's what you're suggesting, do all three of those in October.
Right, but that's why I want to look at it, because seasonally, you may have a downswing in your CPI through the spring, but then you might see an uptick toward the fall, because if you think about it, your summertime is when people are out moving around, they're spending more, your real estate market is hotter through the summer into the fall. So you have these ebbs and flows in how your CPI is going to work. Plus, based on not only administrations, but economic budget cycles will change that. If you look three weeks ago, your CPI might have been on a totally different trajectory than it is right now, based on what the economic trends are happening at a federal level, and that may shift some of that data. That's why I wanted to do some more digging, so I understand where it's all coming from, and I'm looking at it in a very mindful way.
Absolutely. No, and I just wanted to make sure there wasn't specific information looking for. To your point about the variability, there is variability, but it's accumulative. The way the Bureau of Labor Statistics calculates Consumer Price Index is cumulative. And so if there's an ebb, if you will, in October of this year, and there's a flow all the way through September of the next year, that'll be factored into the next value, which I think you're introducing regularity by identifying specific data points. It doesn't have to be October, except for if you don't do October, then it would be difficult to use the Social Security, because they only release that once a year.
Right.
And so it sounds like you like to do some of your own research on the data, which is great. Dan's going to have a list of questions for me, and Jim would like to see what the numbers look like as of right now.
And the other thing that scares me is the, I'm sorry, was that next? I'm sorry. The political situation we're in right now, that can take a drastic toll one way or the other. I think that's a good idea, this verified fact, we should wait a little bit so we can have some of those numbers around here.
I just have to say one thing. The point, the purpose of the select board requesting to do this ahead of time was to make a decision based on the numbers. Because the select board previously waited to make a decision until the numbers were available and felt like they were under pressure to make the decision based on the numbers that were presented. So part of the So part of the purpose of doing it now is because the numbers aren't available, and we don't know exactly what the numbers can say. I think Select Person, or Select Person, Chairperson Napp wants to do some looking at the numbers to familiarize himself with these specific data points. But I think the point of doing it now is so you're not looking at the specific numbers, you're just identifying the data points.
I think, I think the Chair has a good example to put forward. I think it's going to be informative, not only to himself, but to the rest of us.
Well, and this has been a, a conversation point that Connor and I have actually had numerous times, is when you look at a recessionary time from an economic standpoint, is that if you follow that trend, there's usually an economic reset in payroll numbers. And when you're looking at the payroll reset, it never resets from a municipal end. So if you just follow CPI, you could go through two years where it's flat, so there's no, no adjustment there. But then you start back in, or if you, in this case, you look at 2020, and you look at COVID, COVID hit in March, and if you follow the economic trend, it's a massive V. And if you were doing it based on the cycle, you would, when we were going through budgets toward the end of last year and getting ready to vote on it, we were, if every, most of you remember, we were just roaring into the pandemic in March at that point in time, and nobody really knew where anything was going. So if you, if you're following that, that piece of it, we never get the economic reset from a municipal end, which is actually a conversation Connor and I have had numerous times, is that everybody stays the trajectory, and when you look at it across all municipalities, it keeps driving the number up, and it always only goes one direction, and it goes up. And it's not just the municipality side, it's the municipal side, the school side, it's any, anything government-related in that regard, where it doesn't have the same market correction that the private industry made now. So it's a, it's an interesting piece. That's why I actually want to go look at this more, so that I understand it in a way that we can, we can talk about it in a very productive and reasonable way, because you may have a point where it stalls out, but then suddenly you have a massive CPI increase when the, when the economies as a whole, or the engine of the economies get moving. You may see this big spike. Well, does that big spike really equate to, to that number is a, is a compensation adjustment after you had no correction in it from that on the red? So, Select Person, answer it?
Yeah. I think traditionally, these things over long periods of time, government usually, usually lags about for three years, private, private sector. But our people live in the private sector, so they buy their, they buy their groceries. So sticking with that, sticking with civilian CPI, or, I think, is more fair to our employee.
That's what I said. I did want to make sure I understand how it's hitting and what that looks like.
I'll be happy to provide the robust data and put it back on the agenda for July 26th.
Thanks, Connor.
Awesome. Thank you all.
Holidays. Yes, 2022 holidays.
Yeah, so the, there's only one specific purpose of the conversation right now as it relates to holidays. In, on June 17th of this year, the federal government established the Juneteenth Independence Day as a federal holiday. I provided a link in my report to the list of federal holidays published by OPM, which is, OPM, the Office of Personnel Management, thank you. And so designated June 19th as a holiday each year. Further, the holiday falls on Saturdays, or on the preceding Friday, it falls on a Sunday, the succeeding Monday. And so the Town of Barrington Personnel Plan establishes 12 holidays in the town. All but two are tied to the federal holidays. There were 10 federal holidays, now there's 11. So the, the two that are not tied to the federal holidays is number 10, which is the day after Thanksgiving, which is always Friday, and 12, which is the, oh, excuse me, 11, which is Christmas Eve and the day after Christmas, which floats. And the Personnel Plan says that the town administrator determines those days each year. So the, the two that aren't tied to the federal holiday. So before, before reviewing the schedule for 2022 and establishing the dates of the holidays, I wanted to bring before the board the fact that there's a new federal holiday and see if the Select Board was interested in making, taking any action relative to that holiday and the approved holiday list for the Town of Barrington.
Select Person, Eric?
I saw that, I didn't pay attention. What, what's gonna happen on the 4th, July 4th?
July 4th remains, Independence Day remains a federal holiday.
Now, we have Independence Day in June 19th now?
That's what the federal government established on June 17th.
I believe they actually, they announced it like a day or two days before this year, so there were a lot of federal agencies that weren't even prepared to respond to it.
And we got our mail.
They, they announced, they made the holiday. When I was on vacation, they made the holiday and the announcement on the same day. Because just side note is that Sunday, the coast guy, they make adjustments to figure out who is gonna go home, who's gonna stay about 10 o'clock in the morning, so. You know?
So we have a little more to leave now.
I think we do, yes, we do.
So what is the board's general thoughts? Select Person, Mantrick?
I think we should celebrate Juneteenth. The state, people in the state have not much relationship to that particular problem, because of our ethnic composition, and I think the board, we keep that focus. I think that helps focus the attention of our people on the larger picture. July 17th.
Select Person, now?
I'll say.
I think that looking at this date and torn both ways, I really think on one aspect, you know, it's, it's like, my left stated and other things here, I really, you know, I just think that I will go, I will go with the board, but it's a cheap way to get out of it. That's the best I can tell you. Thank you.
Select Person, Secoshia?
Well, you know, may, maybe that's a cheap way, but I mean, we're here, and this is, this is the part that nobody likes, because it's a sensitive subject all the way around. My personal opinion, I would like to stay as is. I do respect Juneteenth and what it means and what it stands for. But as a practical side, as far as logistics, as family getting together, I, I more or less see more families getting together on Christmas and Thanksgiving to utilize that extra day to be together with their families, which they could have conversations and talk about Juneteenth at. That's my personal opinion on it, just as far as, you know, if we have people that travel every year for Christmas and Thanksgiving, and then all of a sudden, we take that day away from them, and then, you know, we're gonna cause, you know, heartache there as well. That's my, my two cents of, of what it's worth. I would suggest that we stay with what we have now.
Select Person, Eric?
I'll say the same thing, because I only know the 4th and stuff, and I'm not gonna get into, I would mess up the whole schedule, but it doesn't matter. I don't get holidays anyway, I never will. Probably something to do, I think the 4th is always recognized, and I would consider that Independence Day.
Select Person, Mantrick?
Yeah. There's a little history here involved. I don't think we're gonna change 4th to July 4th. I thought we were talking about adding a holiday here. And I certainly would suggest adding that to the holiday schedule.
Success, suggestion, the suggestion to either add the holiday or add the holiday, one of the other options is to withdraw one of the non-
But I would, I would withdraw one of them. I would just add this to that.
So we would have 13 in holidays. What's that?
Why not?
Well, because I just did a quick projection out to 2027. And besides next year, 2022, and Saturday, Juneteenth on 2027, the rest of the holidays that it would fall on, or the rest of the days that it would fall on, would be one Monday on the 23rd, to the 24th, the 25th, on Thursdays, and then on the 2026, it would be a Friday. Do I see that being the best move for our town, where Mondays and Thursdays are key for our town hall and our function, to take those out? Do I think that's, you know, that's something that, you know, we have to take into consideration as well? Because we already have Fridays off on the town as well.
Right.
So to add another, and, and I mean, and this isn't to talk about, like, I, I don't want to give money away to, to the hardworking folks of this town. That's, that's not the, that's not the case, but we all have to, you know, come together and get everything out on the table and look at the whole picture.
Yeah. Well, I think the fact that we've closed our offices on a Monday tells our community that we, as the Select Board, certainly consider that important holiday.
Sue?
It's a, one thing I would like to point out, just from general sense, is that it's a holiday that was created by appointment, not, not by Congress. So, you know, I, I tend to try, like, you know, because depending on the way the wind blows, it may change with the next administration. It may, it may not. I don't know how that goes.
If, if we are right to respect holidays, it doesn't change regardless of the administration. Just a federal holiday doesn't mean that we don't not recognize the importance of this.
Well, I think there's a lot of moments that we would recognize for importance, not just Juneteenth. I mean, you, you could, we could pick apart a lot of different points in our history that are significant in many ways, shapes of passion.
Oh, it's DeLio never gets street credit. It's always Columbus, you know?
Neither, I'm sorry, my bad. Or if you're in Chicago and it's the last few days off, so that's a.
Right. There's, I mean, there's a litany of, of holidays. So it, we've had discussion on it here. Is there, is there a motion?
I will make a motion just to keep this going, because I have stuff to do after this meeting. I will make a motion to keep the holiday schedule as is, but leave it up for renegotiation next year at some time. If we want to address it at the start of the year, clean slate, and, you know, it'll give us some time to see how things are going, and, you know, and see how everybody, where they're migrating to, and you know, we can always keep it open, you know, not shut our doors on it, but I would like to keep it together. Let me clean up that motion.
I got a rambly, sorry.
My bad. I would like to make a motion to keep the holidays as is.
Is there a second? Roll call vote?
Eric.
Mantrick, no.
Bailey, I.
Secoshia.
Nappi, but I would also like to ask.
Sorry. Was somebody seconded there?
Yes, Select Person.
Oh, sorry. I didn't see it. I didn't.
I would, what I would like to ask is Connor to monitor what other towns are doing with regard to this, and bring it back before the board at a later point in time, when we've had some time to see how other municipalities are either implementing it or avoiding it, and that way we can get a better handle at what the state of New Hampshire as a whole is doing.
Would you like, is there a timeframe, Select Person Secoshia, by Chair Secoshia mentioned the beginning of the year, like, are you, would you like to revisit it in January? Is there a timeframe? Because I think communities will, will very likely contemplate this at various times, so I may think we're only ever gonna get a snapshot. So do you want to identify a time you'd like to revisit it right now?
Well, I'm trying, most towns have their, their annual calendar out, usually before the first of the year, right around the first of the year.
So.
Revisit it in December.
I know, it's, it's a little bit of a stretch, but I think.
December, January.
Yeah.
We could also think about having a discussion during the deliberative session.
Right.
No, and there we go. Maybe, yeah, let's put it on the deliberative session.
You want to put it on the board?
No, no, I don't want it on the board. That's a Select Board decision, and I don't, you're gonna go down a rabbit hole. How long do you want to spend it deliberative?
They'll be coming.
They're all there anyway.
You may have a, a multi-hour discussion over this back and forth, and I don't think that's gonna be productive and deliberative. There's other important business actually.
I'll plan on, in December, January, to provide an update to the board of a survey municipalities adopting Juneteenth, the federal holiday, and the board can revisit, but at this time, I'll prepare a schedule next year, not including that whole.
Excellent. Okay. Any other new business items? Select Board report, Select Person, Eric?
Oh, yeah.
Go.
You ready? Townlands, I've been doing their homework since they were, they haven't been here, but they're working hard. And Conservation, look at all the recommendations of the Townland, and they'll have a full report. We'll be getting back to the Select Board with everything, the Townlands and Conservation and what. And Conservation, you can have six members, and we're gonna be down a good member, and then, so we're looking for anyone out there, we're looking for what's for, Mr. Bailey, like, joining that, I'm ready to. But we need people, it's up. And I understand that they go up to six, it's hard to get volunteers, so we'll take anyone we can get. And then, yeah, and it's, it's up. People, it's hard to get volunteers these days, but I hope we get some. If anyone's listening, there's openings, and all boards actually probably for the town. Thank you.
I just wanted to add one item on the conservation front of community interest. The Goodwill Conservation Area, a logging operation will start the week of July 26th. It's a collaborative effort with the Conservation Commission, the Townlands Committee, Sel as the Conservation Easement holder, and Mr. Paul Tanish and Stacy Hall, who donated Conservation Easement off Ross Road. So if you're out in the Goodwill Conservation Area and see folks cutting trees and blazing trails, they're doing it on behalf of the town, and we're very excited for that project, which will result in a new parking area to access that conservation area off Ross Road.
And trails too.
And, and new trails. Thank you. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Select Person Bailey?
Thank you very much. I must apologize that I was on vacation for.
A month?
Yeah. Time. It really was, was really too short, as everybody would say on it, but I haven't been, I've got the schedule all mapped out, and I've changed my doctor's appointments around, so I can make all these meetings and everything else. The only one other thing that I would, I have a concern. I would like to see a different layout of the way we're, we're sitting here now, just to make it easier so we can observe everybody. So that's all, that's my only question.
The challenging part of that is the camera on the TV screen can only cover so much distance.
Point taken. I withdraw that concern.
And Mr. Bailey, you can watch the folks talking in that tile on the right as well. Each time, each, each time somebody talks, see, I guess Select Person Air is a little farther away.
Could you, could you blow that up? Let's pitch it.
I'll try. Maybe?
Well, I'm all about helping.
So you can see the screen. All right. Select Person's reports. Stay focused. Select Person, Mantrick?
None of the committees that I'm on met previously. ABC will meet on the 7th of September. School Board meets tomorrow. I'll attend both meetings, and they're, they're kind of on call for the transfer.
Select Person, Secoshia?
Well, first off, if it helps, Mr. Bailey and seating arrangements, I could stay home and chime in.
It's probably be air conditioning.
From the computer. Ah, maybe it is, maybe it's not. To be honest, I did not have a chance to catch. To be honest, I did not have a chance to catch up with Jesse yet. I know that they're rocking and rolling with summer camps and doing what they can, so.
All right. We did not have a meeting on the 5th. So there was nothing there. Sorry. I need to clean up. There is a planning board meeting scheduled on the 20th. Or sorry, we did not have a planning board meeting. There's a planning board meeting scheduled for the 20th. Not on the calendar, but there is a technology committee meeting tomorrow afternoon at 4:00 PM.
Correct. Select person, man, track?
Sorry, what was that? Did you get a report?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, I submit trick.
I was trying to do the spotlight. My apologies.
Reported that none of his committees met. They meet tomorrow and Thursday?
27, or the 7th.
He will be attending both meetings.
Fantastic. Please excuse my my brief moment of ignoring select person.
I take it first.
I will. Highly offended. Public comment. Final public comment.
So if there's folks at home would like to participate, I see a a hand just went up from our esteemed Recreation Director, Jessica Tennis. If you go ahead and unmute yourself, Jesse, and the chair will recognize you.
Jesse, are you unmuted?
I am, yep. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can, go ahead.
Perfect. So I just wanted to just quickly update everybody on the Trex recycling program. So we were able to hit our 500 pound goal of plastic during the month during June. So I, we have officially ordered our bench, and I just wanted to just take a moment to just thank everybody for the tremendous effort, especially with the Highway Department. We basically beat our goal by about half the time that we were looking for, so I just want to let everybody know that we really appreciate that, and we're looking forward to adding that bench into the community.
Congratulations.
Great job. Jessica, if we get another 500 pounds, will they get us another, another bench?
So you're limited to getting a bench every six months, so unfortunately, we won't be able to apply for the program again and for another six months, but we are looking at the possibility of starting that up again once we're kind of, you know, fully staffed, done with summer camp, and able to kind of take on that workload again.
So around January, we'll be ready for another bench, hopefully?
That's what we're hoping for.
What's easy?
Hey, I'm I'm always up for a good ski bench.
And I will add, the Transfer Station Administrator, Erin Paradise, received a lot of positive feedback from the community with the opportunity to recycle the plastic film. And so she's in common with some agencies to be able to accept the plastic film recycling year round, even if, you know, certain portions of the time, it's, we end up giving it to Trex for that grant program. So stay tuned for that. It's it's on hold right now, but if we find a suitable destination for the plastic film, we'd like to be able to continue offering that recycling.
Any other public comments?
So folks, you can raise your hand, unmute yourself. If you're just being on your phone, press star six to unmute yourself. Don't see anything.
I would just like to encourage select person Man Shrek is our representative for the technology, for the trans transit community, tran- Transfer Station Committee to continue pushing the Transfer Station Committee for more and more ways to recycle our waste streams and support the idea community composting, individual composting, things like that, that will drive us into being a more eco-friendly.
Erin is working on that, on other things. That's a good one. We don't have a great, yeah, give me a important.
And seeing no other public comments?
I see nothing on my side.
I will close a public comment. Do we have a non-public receiving, non-public motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion second.
All right, roll call vote?
Aye, aye.
Man, sure, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Secoshia?
Napi. Everyone have a wonderful evening.